Good evening. Welcome to the Slane County Planning and Zoning Commission meeting tonight, February 7, 2022. We'll begin with item one, Consent Agenda. Point A is approval of the agenda for February 7, 2022. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'm interested.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Do we approve the agenda as printed? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Item B, or item number one, point B, Approval of the Minutes for the January 3, 2022 meeting. Any discussion or comments from the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the minutes as printed.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the minutes as printed for the January 3, 2022 meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number two, Application CUP 22-102. It's a continuation to consider a request for approval of a conditional use permit to allow a 355-foot telecommunications tower on a 36-acre parcel of land located in Section 29 Township 15, South Range One West.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to remove CUP 22-102 off the table for further consideration and discussion.
Okay. We have a motion to remove CUP 22-102 from the table?
Let's second it.
Okay, we have, it's been moved and seconded to remove CUP 22-102 for further, from the table for further discussion. All in favor, please raise your right hand.
Mr. Chairman, Robert Truel's order says if we don't do that, we can't discuss it. That's simply all we're doing, is just discussing this.
Okay.
Right, Tim? I mean...
Well, you're gonna discuss it and make a motion tonight.
Pardon me?
You will make a motion tonight. You have to make a motion tonight.
Okay, but it needs to be removed from the table if I...
For discussion, yeah.
Yes, that's, that was my motion.
Yes.
It wasn't, it wasn't to approve, it just removed this item from the table since we tabled it last time.
Right, okay.
There wasn't anything at all to do with...
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to remove application CUP 22-102 from table so that we can discuss that motion. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. All right. Staff, can you provide any updates on this one?
Staff has consulted with the county council as I have, as per requested, and I have included correspondence with the county, from the county council in your packets. I will not, the labor what I had spoken about last, the last hearing, you know, going over the details of the site and all, but what I'll say is staff has received direction from county council regarding this case, which has been included for your, your packets. Staff has also included a copy of the relevant sections of KSA 66-2019 in your packets as well for reference. I'm referencing subsection F, items one through 18. Although this statute refers to siting of wireless facilities and public rights of way, it is county council's opinion that this also applies to those towers being placed on private land as well. With that, I will read for the record just a portion of the correspondence from our county council that would be relevant is, I believe, KSA 66-2019 applies to public and private towers. As such, there are certain inquiries that cannot be made, such as business decisions, and the need for additional towers. Whether or not they can be co-located on another tower is not relevant. So therefore, I did include, as I say, I've marked, if you can understand my, my markings there showing items F on the adjoining page, which was the statute that I've mentioned. And I've also included, we ran across a staff report from 2017 that basically is, outlines the details from the discussion that this board had regarding the current amendments that we have adopted for this. And, and it, just to kind of like, for those of you who, who may not have been here in 2017, I said it's to, to kind of remind you of that and to also remind, you know, just kind of refresh everyone's memory of that, the relevance of, you know, what that state statute is because that's what it, I believe, is based on. With that, I also included in your, in your, it wasn't directly in your packets, I just gave it to you today, was the correspondence that I've had back and forth with individuals that have expressed concerns, and I've included those for the record. I just neglected to do that at the last hearing. The, to kind of go over, going back to the staff report, I'm gonna kind of evaluate the CUP review criteria, and that is the golden factors, as the county council has mentioned in his correspondence with me, that we always review whenever we review a conditional use permit. Item number one, which is the location, size, design, and operating characteristics of the proposed development will be compatible with and will not adversely affect the livability or appropriate development of abutting properties in the surrounding neighborhood, with consideration to be given to harmony and scale bulk, coverage and density to the availability of public facilities, utilities, harmful effect, if any, upon desirable neighborhood character, the generation of traffic, capacity of surrounding streets, and to any other impact of the development. And currently, the zoning regulations state the commission may consider the effect of the facility on the character and the neighborhood and other public health, safety, and welfare problems. However, due to the subjective nature of the aesthetic character, more specific guidance in our regulations would be needed. Such guidance would require findings of verifiable evidence to override the precedent already in place for this area. Furthermore, the commission may not consider anything that would prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provision of personal wireless services as stated in 704A of the Federal Telecommunications Act. Item two, Location, Design, Site Planning, and Proposed Development will provide a convenient and functional living, shopping, civic environment, and will be as attractive to the nature and the use at its location and setting as its location and setting warrants. Same consideration as in item one, the commission can only consider those items that it is expressly directed to consider under the zoning regulations, namely setback, fall zone compliance, and compliance with floodplain regulations. Height variance, this proposal is five feet higher than the 350-foot maximum as outlined in the zoning regulations. The commission has, in the recent past, approved a five-foot height variance for, for a similar proposal. Item number three is that the proposed development will enhance or successfully, or have successful operation of the surrounding area and its basic community functions, or will provide an essential service to the community or region. Quality of service would be considered a technical aspect and not allowed for consideration of this proposal per our zoning regulations. So, staff recommendation is approval of the conditional use permit with the following conditions: Building permit will not be issued until the commercial permit review has been completed. Statement from a licensed Kansas engineer verifying structural design, which has been submitted, by the way. The plans, the engineered drawings have been, were emailed to me, and so they, they do have a stamped engineer's plans. FAA and FCC approvals must be submitted to staff prior to building permit approvals. I think that's partially, I believe that's partially been completed already. Alternatives would be to approve the request with conditions as listed above, or conditionally approve the request with other conditions as commission may deem necessary. However, those conditions would have to, you know, involve, you know, any kind of setback or additional structural details that would prove, you know, submitted, or, you know, whatever you would feel necessary, but they couldn't be anything more than that. With that, I'll turn it over back, back to you. I think we do have someone on Zoom that is on the public hearing side of things. Brenda Tolson, I think, is present on the Zoom call.
Okay. Well, does the applicant wish to address the commission?
Hey, good afternoon, commission members. My name is Michael Ruffin. I serve as the vice president for AT&amp;T Kansas. In my role, I'm responsible for all of our legislative affairs activity and external affairs operations throughout the state of Kansas. And so, one, my goal tonight was to, one, formally introduce myself to you all as the official ref of AT&amp;T, and to, secondly, just state the importance of AT&amp;T continuing to further and build out its network in terms of connectivity. The reason why it's important is not only for us, but also for customers and residents of the great state of Kansas. And one thing, we want to ensure that we're always constantly investing in with local communities. As you all are aware, it's through the, through the height of the pandemic and, you know, the need for connectivity is beyond essential, given the fact of all the technology that we're utilizing in our homes every day, right? So, we want to make sure that everyone in the state of Kansas always remains connected and have, have opportunity to have access to high-speed internet access. And so, I just wanted to make it, make myself known here today that, if there's any other additional questions or comments that, you know, we can answer, I'm more than happy to do so, but for now, at the moment, I just wanted to make sure I introduce myself to the entire commission and let you all know that AT&amp;T is in fact here. I want to make sure we have a, remain, remain a presence within this community. So, thank you.
Mr. Ruffin, appreciate you coming in and talking, because it was, it's nice to have AT&amp;T here.
Mm-hmm.
What additional benefit are you gonna provide to southeast Saline County?
What do you mean exactly additional benefit?
You're already down there.
I'm not understanding, I'm understanding your question.
Is there not a tower already down there with an AT&amp;T antenna on it?
I'm not in the position to answer all the technical questions, but to my understanding, I believe that the tower, the existing tower, may be at structural capacity. I'll leave that to my colleagues to take care of.
It's just you were AT&amp;T, I thought I'd ask.
Yeah, well, that is true, yes.
Appreciate it.
No problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Glad to be back. My name's Jackson. Spoke before you guys last month. You know, I think the, my understanding, you know, the reason for the table was to get some additional time to look into a few things, and I'd like to, if I could, answer some of those questions now. I know the, the representative from the Stinson Law Firm for SBA, the existing tower company out there, you know, he raised a question of whether or not the application was complete. There was the, the question of the licensed engineer stamp. We were able to address that, we provided the plans. And additionally, you know, and this is more for the record, the, the, I believe, well, my understanding of the, of the code is that that isn't, that is required as part of the administrative...
The building permit.
Yeah, and, and the building permit.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's, it's not even mentioned as a requirement in the, the conditional use application in general, or specifically for a wireless telecommunications facility. And then additionally, I did want to run through the, just real quickly, and Tim touched on, I think, all of these. The, the CUP review considerations, what can and cannot be considered. And again, this is, this is from the Code of Ordinances of the, of the county. You know, the quality of service provided shall not be considered. Effects, the technical considerations regarding the equipment, ability of the service provider to co-locate or locate on another property, and removal of existing structures. So really, all of those have to do with the, the existence of the other tower, and how it, it cannot affect the consideration of, of our proposed new tower. Yes, the, the end client here, the anchor tenant, as we call it, is AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T is on a tower nearby, but again, per your ordinances, that cannot be considered. And so, I, you know, I think those were the two big questions, was the, the existence of the other tower, and the, the completeness of the application. So, you know, if there's any questions, I'll...
Yeah, Jack, let's, let's discuss that. On a, on a brand-new tower, I could understand quality being an issue, but we're talking about an issue that's already serviced, and now another tower company's coming in. So, quality or not, I'll go back to the question I asked. How is that tower going to improve the qual, the quality, the extent, the wireless availability? How is it going to improve the wireless availability of the citizens of Saline County and the southeast part of the county?
I'm glad you asked that. That's actually item number one, under things that cannot be considered when making a decision.
Okay.
All right.
So we can put towers up on every single section in this, in this county, huh? Every se, hell, every single quarter?
Well, you know, I, I think as long as it meets your code, then, then, yeah.
Who makes the determination, Tim?
There's, if you have a situation, like whether it's putting a new tower up, or replacing equipment on a, on an existing facility, it would come through us, through my office.
We're not denying southeast residents wireless, because it already exists.
But, but here's, here's the thing, Paul. People who have an issue with the way that this is worded, it's directly related to the state.
Right.
So, if there's an issue, I would say, you know, people don't want it. I say, if they're concerned about the unsightliness, or the necessity, or whatever, that's something you would probably want to say, hey, look, State House, you know, bring it up to the State House.
Pardon me, Jackson, I'm gonna direct right to Tim, okay?
Sure.
And I don't mean to ignore you, but after I read your information in your packet, that was my very first thought. It was the fact that we've got legislators that have now been sold out to the wireless communication, because in essence, we're, our hands are tied here, based on what you've given me for, from county...
County council, yeah, yeah. But, yeah, and it's, like I say, and I'm, I'm not gonna rehash what I had mentioned last month about, you know, my, my previous experiences, but it's, this is, you know, it's, it's considered, I think that it's considered like now wireless is a major, what is it, what do I want to call it, primary infrastructure now, or any, like any of the infrastructure that's used, that's considered almost, you know, that's, that's a necessity type of thing.
But you understand the point.
Yes.
It's a necessity, it already exists right now.
Right.
And there's no improvement in that existence.
But if it's, if it's treated like a, you know, and, and again, I don't know the details, but if it's treated like a utility, then it would, we would do the same, you know, we don't think anything really of, like, when service for other items, like, let's say electrical, replacing electrical, or putting, extending electrical out somewhere else. So, there's little things like that that would, you know, that they considered at the state level when they made these changes. So, because they, you know...
Well, appreciate you at least addressing it. Sorry, go ahead.
No, sure. Oh, I mean, I, I think I've covered the questions that were raised last month. I mean, if, if there's anything additional that I can answer today.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for the applicant?
Can I just add one other clarifying point? So, I think I may, was rushing it a little bit too fast. When we talk about AT&amp;T investing in new technologies, we're referring to as 5G capabilities of part of our wireless network. And additionally, in addition to 5G technology, what I'm also referring to is our FirstNet network. Now, I'm not sure how many of you are aware of what FirstNet, FirstNet is, but this is basically AT&amp;T's dedicated network to first ref, first responders and public safety officials, EMS, fire, and police. What this means is, think of the turnpike, for example. When we talk about FirstNet, think of this as a, 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 a high-speed transit lane that allows our first responders' personnel to have priority and preemption, a part of a separate, a separate network managed and ran by AT&amp;T that allows them pretty much to jump ahead of the line in terms of network congestion and traffic and things like, of that sort, right? So, a regular citizen as myself would be on a typical AT&amp;T network versus fire chief, EMS personnel, so on and so forth. They would be on a separate dedicated network line, which will basically, I like to refer to as, I'm at the bottom, the bottom of the list, while these guys, they're, they're on a separate faster network. And this stemmed from, basically, from 9/11. The federal government realized that during that tragic event, there was no dedicated network for all of our essential personnel to be able to communicate as one. So, when we talk about making network enhancements and further investments in new, new technology, this is what I refer to as being a part of our new tower here. So, I just wanted to just use this as an opportunity to also educate the commission members on some of the things we're referring to when I talk about new investments in terms of technology with AT&amp;T. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sir?
Thank you, members of the commission. My name is Jim Greis. I practice law in Kansas City, and that's not the only thing I do, but I do a fair amount of this across the country. And getting involved in a number of these situations where we're trying to build a new tower, many times it's a rural community, and a lot of the questions you're asking are very common questions that come up in connection with a situation like this. What you have is you have a, a new tower developer that wants to, to create a, facilitate a situation that can allow the AT&amp;T to enhance their service, and they, there are challenges with that. And many times, we've heard, Commissioner Finley, we've heard your, your comment very commonly, we've already got a tower, we've already got service. And it is kind of challenging. I mean, as, as folks sitting out here, trying to, trying to, trying to just do, do your, your, your best, right, as a, as a, as an appointed official on a planning commission. The legislature did intervene, and the legislature did say, look, we don't want these decisions to be made on the inner workings of the wireless business because it's pretty complicated, and it's involved, and there's a lot of, I mean, you know, I mean, I will tell you, the interaction between AT&amp;T, SBA, and other tower operators has been going on for a number of years. And for all intents and purposes, what happens when you have one tower with one provider, like this, they have a monopoly on that particular, that particular piece of real estate. And without delving into that further, because it's, it can create more confusion than answers, when you have a monopoly, you are, you're, you're running headlong into the, the spirit and the actual specific language of the Telecommunications Act. The Telecommunications Act was passed in 1996, and it's been updated a number of times. And one of the, one of the, the guiding principles, and, and the theme that runs through it throughout the whole Telecommunications Act, is to open up the telecommunication at the industry level for competition. And that's exactly what you're, you're struggling with right now. I mean, I can see it in some of your faces, like, well, gosh. Well, if you're looking at, at planning principles, you know, what's our zoning? Well, it's ag-zoning. Is this an appropriate use for the zone? Yes, it is. Your staff report has gone through this, you know. Have we satisfied all the planning and the land use principles for the construction of essentially a steel tower? But when we start delving into, well, why would you want to move that from here to there, and does that increase service and all this stuff? That's the stuff that gets exceedingly complicated, gets into proprietary information, gets into information that, representing from AT&amp;T, couldn't even probably comment on some of these. these things because of the proprietary nature of their negotiations. But that's why the legislature's done what it's done. Now, whether the legislature in Kansas should have done that, maybe they should tweak it. I don't know. This is a siting statute, and I will tell you, this is a very common theme across the country. Because these type of decisions on folks like your part, they do get complicated, and we all struggle to just cut to the simple issue. Why should I vote yes? Why should I vote no? And in this situation, you know, it really is important that, as a matter of planning and zoning law, this particular application satisfies, it's a complete application, number one. And number two, it checks all the boxes for your planning and zoning code. And then when you overlay that with the fact that the legislature, they've weighed in, again, call your legislators if you don't think this is a good idea.
Oh, I will.
And I encourage you to, right? Because quite frankly, sometimes legislature doesn't get it right. Sometimes they do think, I mean, let's be honest, right? I mean, we don't need to get into which side of the alley you're on, right? But we can all, you know, throw stones at our elected officials. They don't listen to the right people sometimes and all of that, right? And I'm sure you guys would be a great voice for the counter, right, to what they've done. But they have created this law, and under Kansas law, this is an important guidance for you all in your position. And that's why your council has given you the kind of guidance in your, I mean, I didn't get full visibility of it, but some of the stuff that you read. That's why they're saying that, is because the law of the land right now requires those things to be administered that way. And so it's, I can imagine that, you know, you might think this is, you know, I mean, I grew up in a small town, a little smaller than Salina, right? And I used to refer to my dad as fiercely independent, because he was, you know. And, you know, there is a certain amount of, you know, probably some frustration with the mandate, when the legislature says, you got to do it this way, and you can't think about it this way, and all of that. But it is for a good purpose. The good purpose is what you referred to earlier, is the expansion of interconnectivity and the ability for people to be able to rely more on their wireless service is of critical importance to some people's livelihood. It's also of critical importance to some economic development opportunities for communities. The FirstNet program has its own independent criticality. And as AT&amp;T continues to try to enhance and explore, you know, new installations of technology and whatnot, this new tower will facilitate that. I can't comment on the other tower. I'm not an expert on that. And I actually don't, again, it's not, it's not, that's why the legislature has not burdened you with looking in all of those, all that minutia. But I just want to kind of comment on that, because like I say, you're not the first community that has struggled with this the way it seems like you're struggling. But it is kind of the parameter that's been set, both at a federal and a state level. And you use the word, your hands are kind of tied. I don't really want to use that word, but it really is, you do have a very narrow lane, the way the law's kind of stacked up, both federal and state. And again, it's for a good purpose. The purpose is to, there's like a state and a federal policy that we want to encourage expansion of this connectivity infrastructure so that people can benefit from it. And then as you go forward, and there's a 5G rollout, and all these things happen across the country, it's not just this tower, but it'll be a network of towers. And you need the network of towers. And AT&amp;T, quite frankly, needs to have the right partners. Again, I'm not here to disparage anybody that's not my client, so I don't want to send that, so I'm not saying SBA is a bad partner. I'm just saying that this new tower application is here. It's a culmination of really a long process that has happened. We wouldn't be here asking for this permit if the tower was not, in fact, needed to facilitate the business, the business objectives, and the network expansion. And like I say, just the whole policy underpinnings are, maybe it needs to be changed, but that's kind of what they've mandated so far. I'm glad to answer any questions. We sent a letter, my partner, Eric Martin, sent a letter over. I think you've shared it with them.
Yeah.
That was really to respond to a couple of the legal points. One was the completeness issue, and the other was the applicability of the law to a tower applicant as opposed to an antenna operator. And I say an antenna operator, that's AT&amp;T. They installed antennas on our tower. They do the same thing on SBA Tower, right? Or Crown Castle, or, you know, American Tower, or Vertical, there's a list of 10 or so operators across the country that do this. And it's a real estate business. And that's another thing to think about, you know. If we were trying to build a convenience store across the street from another convenience store operator, would you really feel like, in your position, it was your place to pick and choose which one was going to have the opportunity to be successful? Because for all intents and purposes, we're in the real estate business, just like SBA is. We build a tower, and we have vertical real estate.
But you missed the point.
Yeah.
The point there wasn't whether you build another convenience store across the street, whether you take and build a new building to move the convenience store across the street. That's what we're talking about here.
They can...
I'm not saying you can't do that.
Right.
But that's the point. You didn't explain it correctly. And as to whether we have our hands tied, we do. The state legislators have said that. We have a very narrow lane, as you put it. It's the same thing.
Well, to your point, though, I appreciate your clarification. I appreciate your clarification, and I probably should reword that. Because it is true, we're both in the real estate business, and we're both capable of pursuing other operators to locate, right?
Yeah.
And so in that regard, you know, we're building a virtual, a vertical building. It's a tower that has usually three to five slots on it. I'm not sure on this one particularly, maybe it's three slots. And I'm sure the SBA Tower has the same thing. And we're both capable of competing for the business of other operators, such as T-Mobile, Verizon, et cetera. And so we're not foreclosing that. But on the other hand, if a tenant chooses to go with one operator versus another, that was my point, is that the whole essence of all this legislative activity, the federal and state law, is to enhance competition as opposed to impede. They don't want local monopolies established in communities. Now, again, we can all have a debate over whether that was a good call or a bad call, but that's why this legislation is the way it is. And I can't, I'm not going to try to convince you that the legislature made a good decision. I'm just trying to help explain to you, that's kind of the legislative history behind it. That's the thought process at a high level for the folks that were involved in that legislation. And maybe that helps reconcile some of the questions that you've got. Maybe that helps reconcile.
I didn't catch your name.
Jim Grice. I'm with Brian Cave, Layton Peisner. My office is in Kansas City, although we have offices across the country.
Just looking at all the paperwork.
Yes.
And looking at everything that's going on. And keeping in mind that I've been on this board from '95 to 2004, when cell towers first started hitting.
Yep. Yeah, so you've seen them come and go, and then come again.
I've heard the lies.
Yeah.
I know every lie that anybody out here can tell.
Yeah.
I've already been there.
Yeah.
And now, I'm also aware, because of Tim, that legislation has changed dramatically since then.
Yeah, your siting statute in Kansas? Yeah, it was only passed...
Well, even the changes on the national has changed, in '18 even.
Yes, yeah, that's right.
And the whole point behind all of this is to get that infrastructure out to the rural areas, to be able to assist the citizens in the rural area having access.
Yeah.
And that's the whole idea.
That's exactly right.
Make sure we've got access.
Yep.
We're putting out a whole new infrastructure for access.
Yep.
Has anybody talked to you about Gypsum, the town of Gypsum?
No.
No, they haven't. Of course not. You know, you talk to anybody in Saline County, they know that you go to Gypsum, you lose your coverage.
Well, you have bad coverage there?
Oh, yeah. But there's a tower right there, I can see it.
I know. I dropped a call next to what was originally the Sprint campus in Leewood. The point is, cells don't always work, right? And I think that's a struggle for the operators, because they get those complaints, I'm sure, right? But it is a true fact that across the country, and like I say, even in the urban areas. I live in Kansas City, I'm actually in Leewood, Kansas area. And like I say, it's notorious around town. You drop calls next to the Sprint campus. When Sprint was there, it was always just like this joke, right?
Yeah.
But to your point, there, you know...
My point is, how is this tower, three tenths of a mile, going to provide improved access to wireless capabilities in southeast Saline County?
See, and that's the complicated answer question that I'm not prepared to answer, because I'm not qualified technically.
It was a rhetorical question, but still.
Well, but you know what? It is an important question.
It is.
Not in the sense that it's something you're supposed to consider, but what progressive, new, enhanced infrastructure does is it changes operational model, it changes price point, and it also changes the way in which AT&amp;T can operate their infrastructure and creates more flexibility, at least it can, right? And in that regard, that's why these type of situations sometimes, you know, it may not just be, it's a very involved topic on why people want to do what they want to do. But that's exactly why that the, like I say, the legislative history is to facilitate competition, because competition will allow more opportunities.
But now, keep that thought in mind when you answer this one. Who is this going to benefit?
In a big picture, it's going to benefit your constituents.
Are you sure about that?
Yeah.
I just gave you a real scenario.
Yeah, and I don't know that, I mean, technically speaking, I don't know that, I don't have enough knowledge, nor do we have the right people here to talk about Gypsum, right? But in a general, as a general proposition, as the enhanced network surge goes forward in the United States, if you've been here a while, you've lived through the process. There was a big push to get towers, and then actually, Jackson here can probably speak to this as much as any of us. And then the tower siting business backed off, and then it's come back, right? So in the last, I mean, and I point to Jackson, because your business is to help people find sites, right? And across the country, across the United States, there's a lot of these permit applications going forward. I've been in front of city councils in the last two, three years, and they haven't seen one for 10 years, the first one they've seen, the staff hadn't seen one, and it's, you know, it's a process. And so it's kind of relearning everything. You have this wisdom, so, and of seeing the first round. But I think the reason it benefits the citizenry is because, in general, it allows the network to be enhanced overall. And as the network's enhanced, maybe some of those gaps get filled. I'm not here to say any gap's going to get filled, because I don't know. And it's not a topic that we're supposed to delve into.
But just so you understand, my point of view is that if it doesn't enhance, right here, the proposed development will enhance successful operation of the surrounding area? No, it won't.
It will. It will. For the record, my testimony would be that it will. And I think that the difficulty with that question is it delves into some of the details that the legislature said, we don't want to burden the process with, because we're going to get propagation engineers, we're going to get into all sorts of very complicated information. But the progress begots progress. And in that regard, for the record, I would want to make the record reflect that, from the applicant's standpoint, from AT&amp;T's standpoint, this permit will incrementally not solve all problems for all people, but the enhancement of the infrastructure in the region will enhance the community.
And then it goes back to the siting. And by the way, we're just having a discussion here. Okay, I know what the hell is going to happen at the end of the night.
Well, I don't want to elongate the hearing, I just want to be responsive.
But when you look at where the towers are in this county?
Yeah. I mean...
There's only two people who's going to benefit from this approval. AT&amp;T and the tower company.
I don't know if I can agree with that totally.
Not the citizens of Saline County.
I mean, you know, when you have another type of permit and someone's going to pursue development, I mean, they, you know, by definition, the risks are taken, et cetera. But again, this infrastructure enhancement, that is really a more aggregate enhancement, but it's done tower by tower, it's done location by location. And I mean, I'm getting out of my lane here, but I mean, that's right, right? I mean, this is more about creating an upgrade to the entire, you know, region with more than one tower. But then again, that's why this gets so complicated, that's why the legislature has attempted to try to streamline the process. And I'm probably making it longer tonight by talking so much.
Yeah, you do.
But like I say, I just want to be responsive and trying to be as helpful as possible, because quite frankly, the rules seem rigid, to your point. And I don't want you all to feel, I mean, we're not here trying to jam anything down your throat. We just want to get what the law would allow us to have so that we can pursue the business pursuits that we have, that our client has, rather. And try to be as responsive and as respectful to your difficult job as we can be.
I appreciate taking your time.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wish to speak for the applicant?
Yes, could I please speak to the board?
Is, are you speaking for the applicant, or?
I'll address the questions to the applicant as well, because the information's going to have to come from them.
We haven't opened it up. It's still the applicant. We'll open it up to the public in just a minute.
Okay, yes, that's fine. I would love to ask a question of the applicant.
Can we, can you hold on just a minute? We'll open it to the public shortly.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay. Before we open it to the public, is there any other discussion from the commission? Any questions for staff?
All right, we'll now open it to the public, and go ahead with your question.
Hi, my name's Brenda Tolson Marcus, and I'm a landowner that is going to be located to this antenna that is proposed, okay? And so I'm coming as a landowner from multiple perspectives, directly tied to the FCC. So I understand that by you building a new tower, or co-locating antennas on existing structures, or a new structure, that there has to be environmental reviews, okay? And because we have endangered species in this area, such as prairie chickens and bald eagles, I would like to have all of the environmental reviews that are required under the NEPA. Has all these NEPA Policy Act forms, are they available to me and to this board in Saline County? Yes or no?
That would be a technical question, and it's not required to be submitted to us.
It is. I'm sorry, Tim, in the most respectful way, it is required, because it's straight, directly stated on the FCC protocol under the NEP process what has to be done. And because there is an environmental impact to this area, and it is a related environmental statutes, under the NEPA, we have the rights as landowners, and we have the rights as Saline County commissioners to ask. For the NEPA checklist, we have the right to ask for the Form 601 flow charts, for the Form 854 flow charts that is directly tied to the FCC, and we have the rights for all the fact sheets for the site testing involving all the ground disturbances, as well as the process overview. So my question is, is if this is going to be something I'm going to have to live with, I would like to have the data that is required, very specifically, and been written into this, for the local and the state to be able to ask through our rights and our statutes to any provider of an antenna or a tower, this information. So is that available, yes or no?
At the moment, no, but the commission does have the...
Okay, can we please, as a commissioner board, ask for that information to be delivered before a decision is ever made?
They can be made, it can be done as a condition of approval, which means that they would have to make a motion on it tonight. And it would be a motion of approval to meet or submit whatever, any state and federal requirements that, you know, documentation that would be...
I want the specific. Okay, and I'm so sorry, Tim, I'm not trying to ever speak over you and be disrespectful. It's hard sometimes when you're on Zoom. So I'll watch real carefully. But the FCC very succinctly stated this. As an environmentalist and as a landowner, I think it is our stewardship, and it is our obligation for all future generations to show that we have fought through these decisions, and we have used the tools that have been placed under federal statutes to us to ask these questions. Because I, as an expert witness on many different cases throughout the country, can tell you, when it comes to somebody being impacted at their home, these people move on. But we're the ones that looks at it in our sunrise. We're the ones who looks at it on our sunset. It is in our view, 24/7, when we're in our beautiful arena. So this is going to become part of our airspace, but not only that, it's the impact. So if you, and I'm visiting with the board, okay? Under the Nature's Conservatory, there is what is known as the Site Renewable Rights. And it's all part of this green energy, and it's our obligation to understand what the impact is going to be on the future. And all the studies will clearly show that there's an absolute impact... And it's, and it's all part of this green energy, and it's our obligation to understand what the impact is going to be on the future. And all the studies will clearly show that there's an absolute impact on the prairie chicken, that they will not hatch their eggs, that they will become endangered from these towers, and that those studies have occurred time and time again. So we have, under the FCC, we have statutes under Endangered Species Act, we have rights under NHPA Section 106, and we also have the right to ask, okay, what are the megahertz that's going to come off of this? What is the electromagnetic frequency? What, how many studies have you done internally to see how your guide wires have killed migrating birds and how many birds have been taken out in Kansas or in Slayne County that we will never have again because of these towers? So these are all a different lens than any of you have talked about tonight, but I, I emphasize, and I am impassionately asking all of you as board members to say, are we going to be great stewards? Are we going to take the tools that exist in our country? And, and through rich studies of green energy and say, are we going to take care of the nesting sites? Are we going to make sure that these birds are not abandoning it? And, and, and take, and study the wildlife effects before we just blindly go through and allow technology to be put up that will forever alter and change the trajectory of our endangered species? Because like I said, we have bald eagle, bald eagle nests that could be completely impacted by this decision. And do we really want to make that for the benefit of, of just a few entities versus our, our future farmers, our future landowners, our future stewards of our country? I, I think we just need to put a bookmark in it and really stop and think about it for a moment. And finally, my, my final impassioned plea to you is that we understand, you know, what is the electromagnetic pollution that's going to be caused by this mobile communication device? How much is going to come out? How much is, how far is that radius going to exist? And until you and I and the members of our county and our school district know that, I think we haven't done our homework. So that's our right to ask these questions. So thank you so much for your time tonight. Thank you for giving me the privilege to ask these questions because it's our absolute rights through numerous entities to, to have this information available to us before you make a decision.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the public that wishes to address the commission?
I introduced myself to you all last month. Still represent SBA, the existing tower. And Tim, I know we got a letter out to you. Did that make it in as part of the packet to you?
It did.
Perfect. I'll spare a little bit of passing out then. I will do the same thing I did last time. Just hand out, it's only one page to add to, to all your paper. And I've got the same frog in my throat I had last month too, but I can't even blame the Chiefs because they're not playing football anymore. So it wasn't me yelling at my TV.
Not COVID, is it?
No, it's not. I tell you what, I, I got my vaccines and I still got COVID in December, so it's, it's not COVID this time. No, and I will, I'll be brief. I mentioned that I spoke last month at this meeting. I'll do my best not to rehash anything I already said. You all heard what I had to say. And I did, or my office, Patrick Edwards from my office, provided a letter. It's my understanding that's, that's part of all the written materials that you all have, have already received to review. So I won't go through all of that in detail, but I did want to touch on just a couple of the points that have been raised today that I, I think are important, regardless of the terminology we've used. It's our position, it's SBA's position that your hands aren't tied, that the, the lane or the considerations that you have are not as narrow as might have been represented. And so the, the first thing I wanted to mention, and it was discussed a little bit at the, the meeting last month, is the Federal Telecommunications Act. We were talking earlier, Commissioner Fennell was talking about how the law's changed in the past 30 years, I guess. That's, that's one of the things that's changed is the, the Federal Telecommunications Act. That's something we addressed in our letter. But one consideration that was before you all last month was whether or not you can discriminate against wireless communications providers. There was comment today about competition, you know, about putting a different store, maybe on the other corner, and it's our position, it's SBA's position that what we're talking about here is different from that analogy. And so the Federal Telecommunications Act says you can't discriminate against providers. If AT&amp;T was looking to, to break into this county, or if it were Verizon or Nextech, whoever, you can't say no because you're AT&amp;T. You can't say no because you're Nextech. That's not what SBA is advocating for. It's not what we're asking you to do here. Mentioned it last week again, I don't want to rehash everything I said in detail, but AT&amp;T currently has equipment on SBA's tower. SBA's tower is, is very nearby. We provided a letter at that time last month that there's room for additional equipment. So if AT&amp;T needed new equipment, it's my understanding that 2020 was the last time that AT&amp;T put new equipment on, but that's happened a couple times since SBA Tower has, has been sited where it is. There's also room on SBA's tower for additional carriers, if additional carriers needed to come in. What's happening here is the possibility of a, a new company putting in a new tower for an existing provider. And something that was important that we did want to highlight in the letter is what is a provider for purposes of the Federal Telecommunications Act. And it's not parallel, it's not SBA, it's not the tower company, it's the folks who are providing the services, it's AT&amp;T. So you can't, can't say no, we're not letting AT&amp;T come to the county. What you are allowed to do is say no to a tower. Your hands are not so tied that you have to say yes to every single tower application that comes your way. And an important part of this and something else that we wanted to highlight in this letter is what does that mean for what you can consider? And so two things that I think are important. The reason I didn't want to hop in and, to be frank, I think, I'll say what I need to say, I won't say my comments aren't important, but I think the comments from folks in the community that, that you all serve are very important in our things that you can consider. And so you can't, can't have a public vote. It can't be something where it's just, everyone said they don't want it, so we say no. But the, the cases in the courts are clear, you can consider community opposition. Can't be the only reason that you deny a zoning change. I want to be very clear on that, that there's got to be some other reasons, but at the same time, you can consider what the public has to say. Another thing in these cases that we wanted to point out with respect to the Federal Telecommunications Act is courts have been very clear that you can consider aesthetics, the visual appeal or lack of appeal when you're making zoning decisions. So we, we highlighted two cases, there are more out there, but that's, that's something, that's, that's something again that I've heard from county residents as they're making this opposition, is this isn't something they want to look at. They're already looking at one tower, they don't want to have to look at two or three or four. That's something you can consider. And so again, this is, is in the letter, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but certainly I guess I can take questions on that if there are more specifically in regard to that. I also wanted to address the Kansas statute briefly. I think I made SBA's position pretty clear on this last month. It's SBA's position that the statute only applies to public lands. It's also my understanding, the county attorney has weighed in, has taken a different position. And with that in mind, I will just say, even, even if you say that the Kansas statute, so it's the 66-219, even if you say that applies to this application, it doesn't stop you from considering some of the things that SBA has already presented. And so again, I don't have your packet in front of me, but it's my understanding that that subsection F, there's factors 1, 2, 3, and it goes all the way down, that, that those were presented in the material. And I do think it's worth just noting, if you look at just 1, 2, and 3, there are some things that the governing body can't require, and there's other things that the governing body can't evaluate. And I think that's an important distinction here where there's certain things that you couldn't require the applicant to give you all their business decisions, you couldn't require them to, you know, tell you what the service is going to be if it's, you know, better than the existing tower. But there are a more limited set of things that you just can't evaluate. And so while you couldn't make them put them in that application, yeah, I've come up and, you know, I handed out the, the propagation maps, and we've given you information about SBA's tower, and with that in front of you, it's our position that the Kansas statute doesn't say you can't evaluate what I've already put in front of you, what the public's already mentioned in terms of their concern. So that's our piece. If you take the county attorney's position, say the statute applies, it limits what we can require, it limits what we can make an applicant put in their application. I do think the information that SBA has provided still includes things you can evaluate. And then just the one more piece I wanted to put, bear with me because I didn't print this one, hence the computer, but I do, so for the, the application specifically, and this is, if, if you disagree with everything else I said, just for the, the code of ordinances, it's our position that what I had highlighted in just that little one-page memo, our requirements for the application itself. So an administrative development permit is required for siting or constructing a new pole or tower. And now, I'm reading here out of page 77 of the code, but there's a section C that's application requirements, and it says all applications will be required, and I think it's supposed to read to include, but all applications will be required the following in addition to, and then it references a different article. And so among those application requirements are what I had highlighted there, the construction drawings and structural analysis, two different things that need to be stamped by a Kansas licensed engineer. From what I'm hearing today, those might have been submitted after the fact, I, I haven't seen them, I also didn't ask Tim for them, so that's not his fault, just to be really clear. But also the written statement of FAA compliance, it's my understanding that might be in the works, but was not included in the application. And again, from, from our interpretation, it, it looks to me like this is an application requirement. Again, it's, at least that's what it is listed as in the code. And so I guess regardless of your take on the Telecommunications Act or community opposition or the Kansas statute, as I'm reading the code, there are certain things that just have to be in the application so you get the opportunity to evaluate these things fairly. And again, it's our position that, that was not fully satisfied.
I need to make a correction.
Sure thing.
Item one that you have mentioned and item two, you're referring to a section that refers to administrative development permit that is a building permit, and that building permit is submitted after this action.
Understood. And so, and I am just reading here for the application requirements.
That's the application requirement for a building permit, and that comes after this process.
And I appreciate that. So that's staff's interpretation, our interpretation is different for what it's worth.
Because if you look on the adjacent page, adjoining page to that, it says CUP requirements for application.
Understood. And I, I appreciate the comment.
I just wanted to clarify that.
I understand.
It is a complete application.
And I, I guess with that stated, the only other thing we will say is the, the height. I don't know what your process is for requesting a variance, but that's our position again, this is a 355-foot tower with clarity in the code, that 350 feet is the maximum height requirement. That is all I've got for you, ready, if you have any questions, though.
Any questions from the commission? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that wished to address the commission?
Tim, could I please say one more thing to the commission if you so allow?
We can give you just, just 30 seconds.
Okay. So my question is, if these cell tower owners want to be good stewards and want to be good neighbors to the people that are going to be living with them, what is wrong with getting the information that the FCC says is allowed to us from an environmental impact perspective and then evaluate the facts?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Do we have an opportunity to respond?
Yeah, if you'd like to respond to that.
Sure. I just wanted to real quickly talk about the, the propagation maps that were submitted by the tower company. You know, he's, he's making the claim that SBA is not a provider, and so he's a, it's a tower company that's creating propagation maps for you to consider. That, that doesn't really make much sense to me. You know, he's, he's claiming, at the same time claiming that SBA being a tower company is not a provider, and then they're providing RF propagation maps that show what a provider would cover. So, you know, that's not really their place to, to say. And then I did want to address the NEPA. We do have a NEPA report. This was the FCC's Environmental NEPA Checklist, and this is something that we can, you know, if you want to make it a condition of approval that we submit it.
Yeah.
But just to, just to, you know, we, we are, you know, we, we always do those sorts of studies before, you know, before shovel hits the dirt. I can, I'm sorry?
You're required to.
Correct. Yep. And I do want to say, you know, that it was determined that this site would not be located within the boundaries of an officially designated wilderness area. The site would not be located within the boundaries of a designated wildlife preserve. It has been determined that it would likely not affect any proposed, listed or proposed, threatened or endangered species. We worked with the, and I apologize, I don't, I didn't, don't have this on the paper, the United States Fish Wildlife Service. We, we did work with them for their review of our application. They did make a recommendation that we add what are called bird flight diverters, bird diverters. They are, I mean, I'm not sure exactly how they work, but they, they're, it's a physical piece of equipment that is installed on the wires that steer, you know, it basically makes it more visible for, for migrating birds and, and other species. So as far as the environmental stuff, you know, we are, we do always check those boxes as, as required by the FCC.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Now we'll bring it back to the commission. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, are you going to allow the gentleman to say something else?
Yep, one more. I just want to be available to respond to some of these, of some of the, the items that opposing counsel, counsel for SBA had run through. I just, I want to, without going through each one, we're really kind of getting into some very questionable arguments. The assertion that this only applies to public property, I mean, this is, SBA has raised this on more than one situation in the state of Kansas. There's no city attorney that I'm aware of yet that's agreed with them on this point. And if you read the statute, it doesn't say that. The, the principle behind doing a siting statute was not there. They're, they were probably a part of the development of the statute so as to streamline the processing. But, but as we go through this, we sent a letter to you that would respond directly to the issue of its applicability to towers, siting authorities, and the, and the Telecommunications Act. To the extent these legal arguments matter to you individually, I just want to make sure that this doesn't left unresponded to since it was brought up. The public opposition, I mean, that's not substantial evidence in and of itself, and you'd have to base it on the, the. you'd have to base that on the information in the record. And again, the public lands argument is just an incorrect legal interpretation, and I'm frustrated that we continue to hear this from SBA and their attorneys in public meetings like this. I want to also point out that if the statute, citing statute, says certain things cannot be taken into account, for SBA's council to stand up here and say, "But you can consider those if you'd like," they're asking you to violate the law. And so, I just want to point that out, the kind of the internal inconsistency in the comment, we've already disposed of through, I think, your staff update in our letter about the application requirements, it is a complete application. But I just, I felt like it's important to not leave those open. I don't want them to leave any doubt in your mind about the legal parameters that govern this situation. And I can respond further, but I mean, you know, as a lawyer, it's hard to get me stopped, so, you know, I hesitate to even stand up. But I'm glad to respond to it in more detail. I think we summarized this in some of our correspondence to you, but.
Thank you. All right, now, we'll bring it back to the commission. Any discussion, comments, or questions?
I just, if we make a motion to approve, we would want to include that grant, grant the variance of the extra five in that?
Yes.
Come on.
What?
You guys aren't discussing very much, you know? I'm really disappointed.
Any quiet? Any comments?
No. You're going to see a lot more of this. I'm forewarning you. I told you that we talked about this 25 years ago, and it's coming to fruition.
I see what you're saying with your argument, as far as how is it going to improve the residents, right? Because I think that one of the initial arguments for the tower change was because of financial issues with charges being made when they have to go in contact with the tower. That was the initial argument, was it a financial issue? And I think for AT&amp;T, honestly, I don't think it's a big, I don't think it would make a big dent in a multi-billion dollar company.
No.
So, the large question that we have, that we would have to answer for our constituents is, how would it improve their service or their quality of life?
No, it would be, it would be structural only.
Right, I understand, but that was just his general question for when we get asked by our constituents why we agreed to approve it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, yes, I also agree that we can't take those certain things into consideration, and we do have narrow lanes, like everyone else is saying, but I mean, you still have that question, and it still needs to be brought up for attention.
Yeah.
Because, again, my take on the initial argument was just a financial one, pretty much. So, I get all of it, and, you know, it's kind of hard, they did answer the questions. I mean, yes, we could approve the five extra feet, but also, can we make a conditional improvement, or to have the compliance, or the, you said that you had the NEPA data? I mean, can that be made public to our constituents, from the public? That way, they have that information available to them, that way, that's at least answered for them, and we've done our job for them in listening to the public. That would be my only question.
Yeah, that would be fine. Yeah, that would be acceptable.
And my summary for everything.
Right, and you can say any state or federal requirements, you know, approvals, or whatever, you can say is a condition.
Yeah, I just kind of want to let that just be known, as far as like that, that would be my just opinion.
Okay.
So, yeah, I see, it's a complicated issue, but, yeah, I think that we know where this is going to go.
Well, yeah, the fact is, we're putting up another tower that's not going to improve the citizens' wireless communications.
But Paul, we can't make that determination.
Exactly.
That's not, that's not.
And if you read.
But we're discussing.
I know, I know.
But it's continued discussion of things that are immaterial to our.
Right, correct.
And if they're not material to us, then why the hell are they coming to us?
Because they have to.
Yeah.
But we need to believe what, we requested Mike Montoya to make his statement, and he did, and I appreciate Tim getting in contact with him, and I think he, I fully, I've known Mike a long time, and I fully trust what Mike's telling us.
Yes, I read that too. I agree.
You know, after this, as the gentleman have said, we need to talk to our legislators, House and Senate both, and if we have a concern about what's going on, then that's up to us to do that.
Well, it is up to us, because you guys need to realize that if this truly has our hands tied, then there's no reason for these damn things to be coming to us. Now, if we have an out here, it doesn't enhance the citizenship down there, the citizens in Southeast County, because it already exists.
But do we have a way to, we can't make that judgment call.
And there's nothing that's, there's nothing.
Any improvements that need to be made can be made on the existing site.
But that's not something we have the ability to make the call on.
Exactly.
And we can't even ask that.
That's exactly right, but we can discuss it.
He goes back to free trade, yes. And that's what it comes back to.
You know, essentially, we're left to a few potential conditions we can apply, and that's about it.
And I hate to see that the legislature sold us out.
Yeah, you may get something you may not like.
It's one of my mantras, be careful what you ask for, you might get it.
Bingo, that's my point, Paul.
You got to live with it.
All right, any other discussion? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve application CUP 22-101 with the five-foot variance.
102?
102, yes. You are correct. With the staff recommendations from, printed in the.
And that would include the NEPA regulate, data too.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we approve application CUP 22-102 with staff recommendations as well as the NEPA information. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, staff, is there anything else for us tonight?
I've got a few little miscellaneous things to go over with you.
All right, have at it.
And the.
Thank you, gentlemen.
The, basically, the first thing I want to show you is the map that I provided for you, or staff provided for you, is just for your edification in the future, if you just, you know, just wanted to, if you ever wanted to.
Appreciate you doing that, Tim.
Yeah. And the, we've got one, and I think Admin's got some too, so we all, we're all on the same page as far as where the radio towers are in the cell. And it's divided up, as you can tell, into radio cell and internet towers. The other thing that I wanted to bring up was, we have a couple of expiring terms. Leslie and Kai are, you're both have your terms need to be renewed in March if you want to continue. We can just let Kathleen know.
Correction, not in March, at the end of March.
At the end of March, end of March is when it's due. And so, if you would let, like I say, Leslie and Kai can let Kathleen know if you want to be renewed for another term. And if there's anyone else who may not want to wish to remain, please let Kathleen know after the meeting.
Please don't tell me anything tonight.
Don't make me cry, Paul.
We will, at the next meeting, need to elect a new chairman.
Right, next month's meeting, we're going to have to do the election of officers again. It's past year.
And code says that he's served his time limit.
Okay. Fired. As far as, as far as being.
Slidered eyes.
As far as being chair, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make, I didn't, I didn't want you to leave, too, so.
No, please don't.
So, that's coming up, and also, one of the things that was brought up at the last meeting was, you had talked about agricultural lot splits and stuff, and one of the things that I wanted to kind of go over with you on that was, it says, under 13A 3.07, item C, it says, "Any original or secondary parcel may be split into two tracks that meet current zoning regulations and are to be used for agricultural or single-family purposes in the following manner: Number of splits allowed per parcel shall be based on the density of dwelling units. The ag zoning district, the density of .0125 DUPA, or one dwelling unit for every 80 acres. Allowable splits for any original parcel, one split or building right for every 80 acres, plus one." And my interpretation has been plus one, meaning plus one building right.
Okay.
That's how I interpret that. And allowable splits for existing secondary parcels, that's secondary parcels in existence prior to the adoption of this policy, one split or building right for every 80 acres, they don't get the plus one. So, if it's a secondary that's been split off, they don't get the plus one. So, so that's, I just wanted to kind of, you know, bring that to you all's attention, because I know that a lot of times when I bring these to you, I said those splits, they'll, it gets kind of confusing, and I know that the, I've.
It was never confusing.
Until I came along.
Last time. I mean, it was very clear and plain, two sites per quarter. And now, you're telling me it's three sites per quarter.
Well, it's, for, well, that's what it says, I mean, that's how I've been going off of it, you know, I mean.
Yeah, and that's how we've been interpreting it for several years, so.
Way back to Vicki.
Yeah.
But the other thing I was going to pass out for you is the, pass a couple of things out to you. This will be our bylaws, and I wanted to kind of go over something, the bylaws with you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I didn't want to pass all this stuff out, make you wonder where in the world is all my package. Okay, last, last month, we had that approval of the, that individual that had a conditional use permit for the accessory residence for the family, you know, for the, you know, temporary residence. And the applicant didn't show up, and I was reminded that you have to, you know, in the event that an applicant doesn't show up, or a representative for the applicant, that it needs to be tabled. So, just to kind of, and it was, I was reminded of that when I was looking through the, through the bylaws. And what I may do is, next month, since we're, I'm planning on returning to the comp plan, and since we're going to be electing officers and doing all the kind of house cleaning stuff, I thought it might be a good idea just to kind of briefly go over the bylaws again, just to kind of, to refresh everybody's memory and stuff. It's good to do that every once in a while, and it's kind of like, to let, remind everyone of what we can and cannot do, whether it's me as staff or you all as commissioners. So, if that's all right with you all, I'll go ahead and do that too next month when we consider, I'll just kind of like, we can go over these then, so. And let me see if there's anything else.
That will be Monday, March 7.
Yeah, Monday, March 7. And I believe, I believe that's it.
Okay. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
Second.
We moved and seconded, do we adjourn the meeting? If you'll, say aye. Meeting adjourned.